Are we ready? Okay. All right, we'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. We're gonna start off with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much to everyone that's come. We've got TEA reps and our SPOT SD, it looks like, and lots of, lots of people here from the district. We appreciate you guys coming and being a part of our board meeting. We are going to, I don't believe there's patron comments, correct Jackie? Okay, okay, thank you. Oh, that's after anyways. Okay, we are gonna start out with the Twilla Education Foundation and Linda Clegg has some recognition.
We're happy to have with us tonight Matt Potter from Cargill for this presentation.
Yeah, so Cargill has decided to give $60,000 to the Twilla Education Foundation to help support the children and another portion of that also to go towards the building in Ofer. The Education Foundation does great work for the community and the kids and we're happy to support it and I'm very pleased to work for a company that's willing to support our local communities. So I'm gonna present the check to the Education Foundation and the board and, well, happy to be here.
Thank you, Matt. I'm happy to have just a minute to recognize Cargill as a longstanding and sustaining partner over the years. Because of their generous donations, we've been able to fund several outstanding programs for kids, such as our Fruits for Kids, all of the Life Cycles programs, Aquaponics, our new weather station in Ofer. And this year, besides funding those wonderful programs for kids that, that give them hands-on opportunities that they would not otherwise have, they're also donating the additional $30,000 for the Learning Lodge. Now, I just wanna say, Matt, that words really don't adequately express how we feel about Cargill, but thank you very, very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up is our school presentation for Twilla High. And Jeff Hamm, our area director, is in tonight for Mr. Jarnigan.
Well, gosh, Madam President, it's my privilege to be here with you tonight. Wish it was under better circumstances, but just happy to fill in for Principal Jarnigan, who's with his wife tonight, so I want to excuse him, given the circumstances, and, and would like to move forward with these recognitions. I'd like to invite Garrett Rose up for color commentary along the way. Liberty's not here yet. So we're still waiting on our, on our student recognition and the parent recognition. So I'm gonna start with Sam Bobean, if she'd join us up here? Bobean. So it was my privilege to, I was privileged to hire Sam several years ago. It's been awhile, but I will, I'll read what Principal Jarnigan wrote and then just back it up. Says, Mrs. Bobean? Bobean? Has been a much-needed steadying force for the students at Twilla High School. While her booming voice and sharp reminders to get to class are heard throughout the halls, Ms. B has a soft side and a big heart for students. The same students she is strongly reminding to get to class are the same ones seeking her out for help. The in-school suspension room has become a safe haven for students who need an encouraging thought, guidance, and advice, and a chance to reset and refocus. Ms. B is here at 6:30 a.m. and opens the room to help students make up U marks, and she stays until well after her contract time, all for the benefit of THS students. Ms. B works closely with teachers, administration, and other stakeholders to make sure that all students' needs are being met. She probably puts in 20,000 steps each day, that hurts my knee just to say that out loud, shuffling students to where they need to be. We are thankful for Ms. B and humbly beg for 20 more like her. So, just wanted to say, we, we knew, we, we knew we found an amazing person in Sam from the day we hired her. She's done a lot of different things and patrolling the hallways at Twilla High School is not for the faint of heart. And she does, I'll just say, she holds her own in every way. And not in a, not in a mean intimidating way, but in a supportive, where kids know she cares way. And so just super lucky to have her at Twilla High School and grateful that we found her and wanna congratulate her and say, well deserved and long overdue.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Do you want me to ask her who she has with her?
Yes.
So step to the mic, Sam.
This is my significant other, Mr. Fisher. He's retired Army. I'm actually retired Air Force. I've done 24 years, he did 20. So, at my school, I love my school. I will fight for my school and I will keep my school safe. And it is an awesome school, so many intelligent kids. So I'm very proud of the job that I do. And thank you very much for the honor.
And I'm gonna shamelessly plug, Sam is the reason why we need 40-hour ISS coordinators.
Thank you, sir.
Well done, young lady.
All right, Ms. Polly.
Yes ma'am, Polly Tolbert, come on up. So, these guys are just making me look super good because I hired both of them before I left. So Polly Tolbert is the, is the certified employee of the month for Twilla High School and I'll just read what Principal Jarnigan wrote about her and then back her up as well. Polly Tolbert is a fantastic teacher. She is witty, fun, knowledgeable, and engaging. Polly is willing to go above and beyond what is required of her as an educator. Polly is in it for her students. She builds and maintains strong relationships with students and colleagues. During my first year as the principal at THS, this is Principal Jarnigan, I asked faculty to clarify their why, why they got into education. Polly's response was, I love the kids, I love the content, I love my coworkers. I am here each day to help kids realize how amazing they are and show them how they can be even more amazing. Polly contributes to the school and greater THS community. In addition to being an amazing ELA 9 and creative writing teacher, she is the creative, creative writing club advisor, freshman class advisor, and master of ceremony for Mr. Twilla. That's probably the hardest of the three jobs. She also finds time to be an amazing baker on the weekends. She owns and runs Sunshine Baking Company, which additionally lifts and brightens others. We are fortunate to have her on our staff. If you're, if you are, if you ever get the chance to speak with Polly, buckle up because you are going to be laughing and smiling a lot. So that's how he concluded. I just wanna say, I poached Polly from Twilla Junior High and we put her straight into working with freshman English. She has an amazing rapport with that clientele. If you, if you've ever, I've sat in on her classes many times and, and she just has a wonderful rapport, relationship with those kids and makes learning fun and makes it come alive for them and just really lucky to have her at Twilla High School. So again, another recognition well deserved, so congratulations.
Do you have anyone with you, Polly?
Um, no.
That's okay.
I have a lot of people who love me.
Yes.
But I just, I just left them dinner and then I left.
Maybe that's your reward that you got to leave.
Especially, yes, we're finishing up quarantine also, so big reward, big reward.
So, so per Erin's write-up, I thought instead of having her introduce who's with her, I'd have her tell us a joke tonight, so.
None of my jokes are board meeting appropriate.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So Twilla High School's Volunteer of the Month, her mother just passed and she could not be here with us tonight. I was unclear on whether she's in Texas or Connecticut, in Texas. So I, do you still want me to read the write-up or do you just wanna move, just want me to read the write-up? So their Volunteer of the Month is Sarah Drew Bay. And this is what Erin had to say about her. Sarah is amazing. She is truly our team mom. If we need something, she steps in and gets it done. She has attended almost every race over the past two years and made our home base a true home for kids. She is willing to help cheer a kid up if they had a bad race or organize food so that there's, there are post-race snacks. We have had a kid who had a food allergy and Sarah was very careful to make sure this runner wasn't exposed to anything that may cause harm. She also was our team photographer, getting pictures of all the kids and helping to build senior tributes for all the seniors. She is a coach's dream helper. She just does what needs to be done many times without being asked. So that is Sarah Drew Bay. And we've been holding out for our student, but she's not here yet. Do you, I, I thought she was coming, but.
She was coming too.
Supposed to be here with her dad, but she's not here yet, so I don't, do you just want me to read the write-up and move on? Okay, so the Student of the Month is Liberty Lyman. She is a senior at Twilla High School and Mr. Jarnigan gathered tributes to her from three different teachers. The first one says, Liberty is extremely talented. I have had her in AP Psychology and she adds many wonderful comments in class. She does exceptional work on projects and presentations. She was also identified by a faculty member to be part of the mock trial team as the courtroom artist. Later this month, she will compete in a timed courtroom sketch, where she will need to pick a scene from the mock trial competition and then have one hour to draw the scene. It will then be entered against all other team drawings. That is from Jonathan Lundgren. The next one, Liberty is always smiling. She always has a great attitude no matter what is going on. She works hard and does so with a smile on her face. I look forward to seeing her as I know she will come in laughing and smiling. She is very talented in many areas, including art. It's from Leah Lorton. And last but not least, Liberty is hardworking and always up for a challenge. She juggles multiple extracurricular activities with a happy, helping attitude. She offered to work on extra chalk murals to help us finish up in style this year. And that's from Mrs. Ruth Nichols. So just three tributes to this young lady. I was hoping she'd be here because she's a senior and I would've been her principal when she was a freshman, so I would've gotten to see her, but I guess we'll just hold on to these and, and see if they show up. That's all, there's, there's no student presentation tonight, so that's all we have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you Garrett.
Please send our love and prayers to the Jarnigans and well wishes. Okay, we don't have any patron comments and so we'll go right into the consent items. If anyone needs to pull anything or if we're ready to. I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the consent items as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Camille and seconded by Bob to approve the consent items. Are any discussion? We're good. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Okay, on to number five, 5.1 Superintendent's Annual District Report.
Yes, that is me. Are you okay? Do you want me to stay here? Is that okay?
Yeah, you can, whatever you want.
I can stay here. All right, so the presentation is there up behind you and then it's also in Board Docs. This was a fun report and I, I first need to thank, even though she's not here, Karen Crawford from our Communications Department. She helped me make this look really pretty. So she added some stuff, gave me some pictures that we have on file and everything, so anyhow, thank you to Karen. Our next slide is just our district by the numbers. I'm not gonna obviously read every slide, I'll just bring out some highlights. The, the items from this, this slide is we're growing, we know that. We're growing both in student count, both brick and mortar and online especially. We're growing in buildings. The great thing about this is we're meeting the challenges that are in front of us. This is, it is, I've always been told it's better to be a growing school district than a shrinking school district. And I agree with that. I guess they both have challenges, but we're doing well in, in maintaining high-quality standards with the growth that we are achieving. On our next slide, you'll see a list of the measure, the measuring, the measurements we use for student achievement. Cadence Math and Reading in K-3, RISE test in 3 through 8, Utah Aspire Plus in 9 through 8 in ACT 11. So the one that I wanna look there on our, our next slide is Literacy. I picked Literacy because Literacy we know is foundational. We've got to have our students reading because reading is, it covers all curriculum. No matter what class you're in, you have to know how to read. The 2020 numbers, I want you to remember, that is the year we came, we came back from pandemic. So, and then this year, or the 2020, those are our beginning of the year numbers. So you can see, we either have growth or we're maintaining right where we were with the previous year. I'm happy with that in the sense that it's not going down. Obviously, I want it to, to be greater, but we do know that because of COVID, we've seen some learning gaps and we are addressing those and, and this Literacy number gives me, gives me hope that we are addressing them and we're, we're gonna be, see great things to come. Back on the other slide, we won't see those results until later in the year as we, as our students begin to take those courses and then we'll be able to give some, some data on what that looks like this year compared to, to last year. So that report will come from Mr. Reitzel later in the school year, maybe first part of summer and, and how all that goes. The next slide I wanna look at is this timeline for our strategic model. I decided to base this entire report off our strategic model that we are in the process of creating. The, our first workshop for the strategic model is this Friday. I'm very excited about this, bringing this all together. We will have, I counted, I think it's 45 different district-level people together and starting to create this district mission model, strategic model for our district. You'll notice on the, the timeline and certainly Workshop 1, 2, and 3, you guys know you received an email from me today, you're all welcome to any of those workshops to see how that goes. You'll, you'll receive a full presentation in March and then we hope to adopt the strategic model in the April board meeting. After that, on June 7th, that will be rolled out to our administrators. Administrators will then have, so we're gonna have the leadership in June. They'll receive the strategic model. They will then have the rest of June, all of July, first part of August to align what they're gonna be doing in their schools to what our district strategic model is. And so that's, we're real excited about this change that we're, we're gonna see in Twilla County School District with a strategic model. And as you know, I've said this before, we will fold in our report from Systems Accreditation, from Cognia into this and it'll really enhance the strategic model. On our next slide, so it's important to remember that each of these components, the elements have not been established except for one area and I'll point that out. So that's what we're gonna be doing in the workshops, is developing the elements, the things that must be in place in order for us to be successful as a district in this component area. So the first component, component is teachers, leaders, and support staff. About teachers, I, I just wanna say that we have dedicated teachers who are committed to student learning. Regardless of the content that they teach, they want students to come into their classroom eager to learn and walk out having learned what they need to, to know. Our building administrators, one thing we are trying really hard to do, or actually, let me rephrase that. One thing we are doing is building leadership capacity. We know that not all administrators, not all teacher leaders come to us with the same skill set. So through our trainings that we, that occur during our leadership, we're, we're building that leadership capacity. And then the one thing I wanna mention about the support staff is that very first bullet. They are vital to schools and vital to students. I, I, there is no way we could run our buildings without our classified employees. They're vital to get our kids to school on the bus and to help us throughout the day and then home again. So each of those three, three groups are just doing wonderful and committed to, to our students. Our next slide, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. This is the one that the component, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, has complete elements which are listed on the ribbon on the right-hand side. A credible, credible and consistently implemented curriculum, embedded use of the instructional framework, strategic use of assessments, and data-informed system of support. Couple items about that. Under collaboration, we're trying to increase, one area that we're really focusing on in increasing the collaborations between our Special Education Department and our Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Department. That has been not happening as well as it could be in years past. So now we're bringing both of those groups together, which we're starting to, to really reap some benefits from that. Under, also benchmarking, we are reintroducing benchmarks. I don't know if you remember or not, but we did away with benchmarks two years ago, two and a half years ago, and we are reintroducing those because we know they are vital to knowing where our students are, knowing how to adjust instruction to ensure students are learning. And then on assessment, that, it's the bottom bullet of the two. Emphasizing district office and school cooperation, developing high-leverage effective teaching and learning systems. Our administrators receive training monthly in the instructional framework, how to know if what they're seeing in the classroom is effective. And so that's an ongoing training that they receive. The next area, relationships and culture. I wanna point out to you, the flyer that is in front of you, just our increases in communication. We have an increase in followers on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter and combined overall, we have 13,538 followers on our social media channels. So we are seeing increases in communication. I guess communication, it's always something we need to improve. It's always something that we're working on, but we feel like we have a, we're, we're making great strides in that area. Student services, just, this is just a focus on student well-being and character education. And under counseling, I wanna point out that we are increasing, increasing our numbers of counselors at the elementary level. Again, I, I look at this as a foundational thing. As we can address student needs through counseling in the elementaries, it lessens situations that may arise in junior high and high school. So having elementary counselors and increasing that is just wonderful. For safe and orderly environment, the next slide, I just wanna point out our, the Safe UT app. The Safe UT app, I kinda have a love-hate relationship with that thing. It, it generally goes off every morning multiple times at 7:00 a.m. Cause I get them from, for the entire district, I get those texts. But I can click on it and usually, I, so I get a text saying there's a problem and then within five, maybe 10 minutes max, I get a second text that says so-and-so, a principal's name or a counselor's name is working on this tip. And so I'd be able to follow up on those and see what's happening. The Safe UT app is one that we know makes a difference. We have learned so much. Things have been reported to us that have just really helped students. And so it's, while sometimes we, we joke that it's a little bit cumbersome, it's cumbersome with a good cause because it really does help our kids. Our custodial services, one thing, you, these bullet points, I didn't create these. I actually went and I sent out an email and I said, hey, I need some feedback on, how do you view your job? What's important to you? And one thing the custodians said, that they know that an orderly environment allows teachers to teach and students to learn. And then the energy, our energy program kinda goes right along with that, where saving taxpayer money by, while maintaining comfortable learning environment. Again, that goes back to our, our classified employees, right? Without them, we couldn't do some of the things we do. And then our Systems of Operations slide. Operations, again, one thing that Ian and his group is trying to work on is just to create a more focused and better-trained workforce. Making some changes in the custodial, job duties, and really trying to make sure that our employees are well-trained and can do their job. Child nutrition, I loved that on that district by the number slide that was earlier, they serve 11,893 meals a day. That's, that's a lot of food going out of our, our kitchens. Of course, it's breakfast and lunch and then also we, we send some, some meals home as well. And then transportation. I, I don't know if you could say that there's one department throughout the district that has been impacted more this school year than another. However, I do know that transportation has taken a big hit. And I loved what, what Clarissa said, shortages cause us to work extra days, take on additional extra duties, and solve problems as a team. It is very common for those workers in the, in the bus garage who have CDLs to leave the garage or leave the office and go out and, and drive a route. So we see that regularly. We're always recruiting for bus drivers. Again, just a vital part of what we do. A few projects that we're working on, you know about Systems Accreditation. We will have, just to give you some updates on a couple of these things, the Systems Accreditation. Most of the, the stuff is due to me by January 26th. I will vet that in an SES meeting on that day. I will then send that to our contact at Cognia and she'll help us with that. And then it will be uploaded to the final Cognia thing, final Cognia website the end of February with our review happening at the end of March. As I learn more about that, I'll give those, the dates to you because each of you will take a part in one of those sessions for about a half hour, 45 minutes. The strategic model, we've spoke about. I'm also in the beginning phases of updating and reworking our organizational chart. We've already made one change, which I'll send to you guys in an email, real minor change, but we'll talk about it. Uh we've already made one change, which I'll send to you guys in an email, real minor change, but uh we'll talk about it tomorrow in our meetings as well. Uh that's has to do with uh COVID and COVID reporting. And then uh one thing that we're working on also that we're starting, for whatever reason, and I I'm not sure exactly why. Several members of the executive staff uh do not have adequate job descriptions. Nor do they have adequate ways of evaluation that are specifically tied to the Utah leadership standards. Uh so that is something that we are working on and by the end of this school year and prior to the next school year. Each member of the executive staff will have reworked and clear job descriptions as well as uh a clear. Method of evaluation tied to the Utah leadership standards. It's a big project, uh Tony, who's out there in HR is probably like, what's going on? He hasn't even talked to me about this yet, and I haven't, but a little bit we have, but not a lot. Uh so anyhow, we'll be doing that. Um and then also multiple, I I meet monthly with uh our Twill Education Association. And I have a list, I counted, but I can't remember, I wanna say seven different items that we're kinda working on. I call them pre-negotiation items and it's uh really just things that are, you know, kinda low-hanging fruit. Things that we can work on and then when we get into the negotiation process, we can uh put a bow on them and and say, yeah, this is something that that we were able to accomplish. So I'm thankful for uh Dr. Harrison and uh Ms. Hall and and their efforts for on that. Um so that, any questions you all have for me, I will say before I turn over to questions. I have big plans for this report. Um and so I'm real excited to to do this report a year from now. Uh when I've I've had some time to think about it, I actually plan on starting on this report about mid-September. Uh in order to have it ready by January uh for this report, so I'm real excited. Um to to be able to kinda take this and make it a little bit more robust and more meaningful for you as a board. So any questions you have for me?
I think we're all in awe and so grateful for that report. I will, I will speak for myself, but I thank you, that is um really awesome to see the direction. You know, of our district spelled out and all the things that you as a. You know, you and the executive staff are working on, it's, we're so grateful for what the everyone is doing.
Yeah, and I'm I'm excited to show you that in March, you're gonna see that, that strategic model is just gonna, it's gonna help us tremendously. I'm excited to uh to tighten it up and really see where we're going with it.
Helps us as a board, I think, make make decisions and things that need to come to the board, that then we have data and so anyways, it's really great. Thank you. Um any comments or questions besides that? Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Ernst. Our um technology director's report, Dustin Nelson.
All right, well, first things first is my slideshow definitely is not as pretty as that one, so. You're gonna be a little disappointed, but uh as we talk about technology, I I I truly am grateful for the opportunity to stand up here each. Each year and and go over the highlights of our department and uh and really just. Just kinda showcase the things that our team is working on in technology. We've really come a long ways in the last um year, in the last two years, as far as um the one-to-one devices and really, really. Getting those implemented in the classroom. Um about a week ago, I was in, I was in a couple of the schools and they're actively using the the Chromebooks, they have them all out on the desk, they're engaged with the teachers. It's really cool to see, it's really cool to see technology just being used in the classroom the way it is and. And we're just getting started, there's so many, there's so many things that'll get better as we move forward with things, but. Um with my report, I mainly wanted to focus on the technology plan that I've been working on the last year. Um the last, the last time I met with you guys, I told you it was something I'd be working towards, really just trying to dial in, evaluate the department. And kinda see the needs and uh and uh really just dial in what our focus is to to move forward as a as a department. Last year, we pulled the, the edtext went over to curriculum, so it kinda changed the scope of the department a little bit. Um and with that, we just kind of uh, we sat down and just redesigned the goals and and vision and mission of the of the department. So I'm gonna hop right into it, um you guys have the full technology plan and right now that is just a starter version. So I I plan, I I expect in the future that that will grow. It's sort of a living document that'll be reevaluated on a yearly basis, we'll read, readjust and evaluate and create new goals and things like that. Um today, I'm just pulling pieces out of it, if there's something I don't cover that you guys wanna talk about, feel free to let me know when we get done and and we'll discuss it. Um first thing as I jump into it is uh is our our mission envisioned as a technology department. And I sat down with my team, we really dialed this into focus, like what's our direction, where are we going, and how are we gonna get there? And so with that, this is what we came up with, we we evaluated the current district's strategic goals and 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 mission vision there. And broke it out into this so we could have our own focus. Um I'm not gonna really read everything, I don't wanna bore everyone here, but if you look at our vision, like it's really great, I think. It just says to create an environment where students, staff, and community have easy access to technology and technology resources. I think that's a really great, great thing, that's, and that's what we're doing, so this will kinda help us guide our decisions as we move forward. The other thing is we created some guiding principles for each sub-department within the technology department to kinda give them more direction as to where they need to. To be focused and where they should go. So for example, down in like the inventory section right there, it talks about how we're gonna maintain the inventory and a rotation and inventory plan for all district technology and equipment. And on the, on the next one, we talk about the help desk and 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 their responsibility to provide top-tier one technology support to. To um Twill County School District stakeholders. Our field technicians to provide quality tier-two customer support and service throughout the district. Our field technicians are really the ground troops on the ground, working with our students every day, they're working with our staff, make sure things are running on that, that realm. And um they're doing a fantastic job, I will say, I should've put in here and I didn't, but um we've kinda been keeping track of of our. Our work tickets since we went one-to-one. And we have a graph, maybe I'll send it to you later, but it's a graph that kinda shows just Chromebook tickets. And I think uh when we started the school year, the very first month, I think we were like two hundred and fifty tickets just in that month. And it's really kind of come down and up and it's all over the place, but right now, I was hoping it would, it would level off a little bit more than it has, but it hasn't. We're still seeing some tickets, we're still trying to provide more training with with how to handle these devices. So students aren't so damaging with them, I guess, they're, you know, I that. Um I will say our elementary school, their their schools, they're doing a really great job, we see less tickets from them. We really struggle with junior high heavily, so. Um I mean, we've seen everything from a horse stepping on a Chromebook to it getting run over with a four-wheeler, we're all over the place, so. Uh washing machine, I mean, we've seen some weird stuff, but yeah. Anyways, um we did, working with with Chantel's team, um they had some funding with the the DTL grant. We were able to get some Chromebook cases that we're gonna provide to some of our our, it'll be for our fifth and sixth graders with a few left over. That we're gonna allocate towards our secondary schools. Um as we receive devices that are broken, we're going to send them back with a lovely case on them to to kinda help protect them, so. As we move forward, we also put together some core values to really just dial in who we are as a technology department and what our focus is. We really wanna focus on innovation, technology's a bigger part of the classroom than it's ever been and we wanna continue to innovate. And move forward to provide um just a really good teaching and learning experience for our students and staff. So um that's where we're at with that. With that, we're gonna jump right into the rotation plan for Chromebooks. Last year when I presented to you, we were just trying to decide what we were gonna do with this. Um and we, we think we have it pretty dialed in, so we've worked with other districts um as well to kinda see what they're doing. Um what we're seeing is uh Chromebook is good for five years from Google, so Google will no longer support updates after five years. So if we continue to operate without a rotation plan similar to how we have with our classroom technology. We would, we would run into problems, cuz we have some equipment that's ten, twelve years old, we have some printers that. I don't know, the one in Lark's office, he hand cranks it, so I don't even, it's just, we're just all over the place with technology. But when it comes to the rotation plan though, it's really important, the way that we have set it up is that kindergarten, fifth grade, and ninth grade. Will be receiving new devices every single year, so. Um if you look in the technology plan itself, it breaks it down further, but um like tier one is kindergarten, tier two is. Um fifth grade, tier three, tier three is ninth grade. But basically, when they receive, so a kindergartner coming into the district will receive a Chromebook that will follow them till fifth grade, and that's a touchscreen device. When they get to fifth grade, they will then get a non-touch device that will follow them to ninth grade, and then ninth grade will follow them till they graduate. So that's where we're at right now as far as the rotation goes on on the one-to-one devices.
Are are touchscreens more expensive?
Uh they, well, you can see right there, so right there, the cost, so the cost for a touchscreen device is three hundred and seventeen dollars. Um non-touch is two hundred and sixty, and that's today's prices, those are pretty accurate as far as like the last quote we received and such, so. But anyways, it's good that we move forward with the rotation plan, cuz like I said, if we don't, five years down the road, I'm gonna be in here, meeting with you guys, saying, hey. We gotta replace fifteen thousand devices, which is, I don't know if you saw Mark's slide, but that's what we have out in use right now is is fifteen thousand devices. And it's, it's, it's awesome, really, it's awesome to see and 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 be a part of, so. Anyways, so that's last year, those are the devices we ordered for financial year twenty-two, and then these are the ones that we. We actually just placed the order for these ones for next school year because we were basically told if we didn't, we wouldn't have them for next school year, so they've already been ordered. Next up is our classroom, office, well, classroom and office technology rotation plan. So it's separate from the Chromebook, the one-to-one devices, this is gonna be your projector, your workstation in the classroom, printer, document cameras for teachers. In the past, we've really relied on the schools to to update their own technology in the classroom. And I don't know if you've been around to the schools, but some of them are updated, some of them are not. Um and it really just kinda depends, each each school has a different budget, so it's hard for them, for some, to allocate the funds to technology. So last year, when I came into technology, one of the goals that I had, cuz I've just be, just working as a custodian. And being in the classrooms and such in the past, I know that, I know that it's been a problem. You'll go to sit down in a classroom for a presentation or something and projector doesn't work or, you know, the is, all that fun stuff, so. We sat down, I sat down with my team and we spent a lot of time to create these two different plans, but we have a five-year and an eight-year rotation plan. So the five-year rotation plan will cover um the classroom equipment that's, that should be replaced every five years. Which is the teacher workstation, um document camera, printer, and I think that pretty much covers that plan. The the eight-year plan will cover the projector, the um phone, and the audio system for the classroom. So that's the direction that we are, we are going towards, we feel that this is a really good direction. Um in regards to what we've done in the past, in the past, I already kinda touched on it, but our rotation plan has been, we run it until it's broke. And then we, and then we replace it, and that, that causes problems, especially now with with the, how much technology we have in the classroom. We wanna make sure the uptime is a max and that we're, we're really focused and dialed in and and provide good. Technology services to our kids. So this is the direction we are shooting to go, we're still in the process of refining the rotation plans a little bit. But um you have a really good example in the technology plan of like how it's laid out as far as schools, we kinda ranked them by the age of their technology. So um like this summer, I think Stansbury qualified for both the five-year and the eight-year um due to the age of their equipment, but. Uh anyways, yeah, so there's that. Our uh our security and surveillance systems, we're kinda, we're kinda rotating that right now just based off of need and what we, what we see fit. We just had the safety audit done last year, that kinda gave us a good starting point as to where we need to increase cameras or um upgrade things. So that, that's where we're at, that, down the road, we might look at a rotation plan or something for that, but for now, it's just kinda as needed, so. Uh as we move to the next stuff, we have our current projects that we're working on. Um I really just threw some projects in here, we've really done so much this year, I can't even. I would be up here for a while if we had to list them all off, but this is a big one, we're talking about that LTE project and getting that up and rolling for our students. Um we just completed phase one of this install, basically, we've been partnered with UEN to get this set up. And we have the radios up on top of Twill High and they are functional, so we're gonna be starting testing, we're starting phase two, the testing phase. Um we're just gonna get things configured, make sure we can get the max use out of the, out of the antennas and the distance and stuff to. To really roll that out. Uh this is just a pilot into this project, um Utah is kinda the leader right now as far as LTE stuff goes. And we have a lot of, a lot of districts reaching in from outside um other states. And really just kinda looking and seeing what we're doing with this. Um there's only a few other districts in in Utah doing this right now, but it it seems like it's a good direction. One of the things too is, is they're actually looking at redoing Chromebooks to where they can have a cellular connection in them and we can put in our own SIM cards. And they would connect up to our own towers just from their Chromebook, so really cool. We could have like routers and stuff on the buses even, so if they're in town, they would connect right up. If they went into another district like Murray or um Ogden that are doing the same thing, they would have internet access as soon as they rolled into a signal. So it's a good, it's a good tool for us, especially as we move forward with with things. My main focus with this is to to pilot it at Twill High School and then I would like to expand it to our more rural schools that really need the connectivity. My aim would be um like Anna Smith Wendover High School is the next, if it was a successful rollout. Um moving it there and really focusing in that area. When we did our our survey back when, I don't know, like a year or two ago, right before we um. Went to the hybrid model kinda that we were running. We found that that those areas really struggled with even having any, any connectivity at all, connectivity at all. So when we, when we go virtual, they just don't have the ability, so it's really a a struggle for them, so. Um we've also talked about like Dougway maybe and Ibapaw, Ibapaw is a little more tricky, but we would, we'll see what we can do out there, so. Anyways, uh here's a quick map, this kinda shows you the current spread of our signal, so this is a live, not live, this is a live. View that we took a screenshot of, but basically it shows you the coverage, the green's really good, that's, that's a really good signal. The red is a good signal, but could be better, um so you notice right around Twill High, it's very red right there. And that's because the antennas are so high up that it's actually shooting over the houses. So we're gonna readjust some things and get that, get that out there, but when you're looking at this, you're really, you really should be looking at about two and a half miles. Um when working with UEN, they're saying that we're probably gonna get the best, the best signals out of our setup. Just because of the way that our county's laid out, so um that's pretty good. The other thing that we're working on is uh for CTE, we're working on VDI, which is a virtual desktop. So this would allow our CTE students to use a Chromebook to connect up to like AutoCAD and they would connect up to our servers, they could do it from home, they could do it in the classroom. Um so if they were to go virtual, they could, they could connect in and still have those high-running um programs like Photoshop, AutoCAD. Uh we have about three hundred licenses, we're so close to having this rolled out, we honestly, we wanted to have it rolled out by the beginning of this school year and it just didn't happen. We ran into a bunch of hardware issues and and some other things and they're just now getting ready to configure it. So we might run some tests right before the end of school and then it should be fully functional next, next school year for those students. If it works out really well, we've talked about maybe doing it for our employees, where instead of purchasing like a desktop or laptop. They would have just a really dumbed-down version of a computer that would connect them to VDI and it would, it would save us money in the long run and it would be good. Uh couple other projects we're working on is some network upgrades in the schools. One of the first things I did when I came into technology was applied for a, for an E-rate reimbursement to upgrade some of our older equipment. So you can see up here, we have Clark Johnson, Twill Junior High, Wendover High, Dougway. Um and Grantsville Junior High and High School is where we're upgrading some of the equipment. And so it's switches, uh battery supplies and access points at these buildings. And the total award amount was like five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars that we got to do that, so it's a really big deal. Um couple other projects, we're working on upgrading um some of the security systems that are a little older and out of date. But they're still functional, but they just, they just need to be upgraded. And then uh we also did receive, there was a, there was an emergency connectivity fund grant that went out. And I had just requested to extend the hotspots that we received last year, I don't know if you remember, but we got some hotspots from USBE on a grant. And they actually expired in in December and January this month. And so this, this funding was to extend them until the end of the school year, basically, so we were able to get that and that's what we've done so far. Um we also have ARP funds that we've used to kinda help with our one-to-one devices, and then T-Mobile donated six hundred hotspots for education. Um they're limited, so they're not, they're not unlimited like the other hotspots we have, but they are good for another four years. have, but they are good for another four years, so, really good stuff. And then, with the technology plan, there's a, like I said, there's a lot more stuff that I wanna include in it, such as an incident response plan, if we were hit with like ransomware or something, um, just kinda how we would go about that. Change management plan, technology best practice manual. One thing I've noticed being in tech, in this department, is like, nothing's really in writing, so we'll make a decision on something, and this is how we handle that situation, and then a couple months down the road, it comes up again, and we don't remember how we handled it, so then we do it differently this time, so we're just trying to standardize and, and create a, a best practice manual to really give guidance to our department. So, that'll probably be, I'll probably have some links to it next year when we go over these things. And then also, an inventory audit plan. When I first came to technology, two of the things they told me I needed to work on was customer service with the team and an inventory plan. And we've come a long way with inventory. I think we have mostly everything in inventory as of today. There are a few items we are still missing when we've done our audits, but, um, we are so close, and it's, it's only gonna get better. Um, we have a much better process for when technology's received, of getting it in, getting it inventoried, and getting it out in the field for our staff and students, so. Anyways, I think that's pretty much all I have. Do you guys have any questions in regards to the technology plan?
I don't think so. Thank you. That was very well put together, and we appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Okay. Um, Board of Education Roundtable. Um, does anyone, the only thing I wanted to add or remind people is, we talked about at our last work session, oh, another work session, it's gonna be on January twenty-fifth at seven PM. And Camille, do you wanna add to that?
Yeah, so, um, and we have a stack of stuff up here on our papers, and part of that is an invite for a dinner on that same night, so I think we might need to look at a different While you're looking for that.
I thought that started at five-thirty, and it was like an open house.
Starts at six, six to seven-thirty.
It's two different things. It was, this one's from the Education Foundation.
Oh, that's.
And it's the Employee Recognition Night, and that one starts at, well, wait it just a second, I grabbed the wrong card.
Okay, Jackie, what's the, we've already turned it into the transcript, correct?
Yeah, transcript, and now that it's, um, only published on Wednesday, the deadline for that is Monday at four o'clock, so we did put it in this Monday, so it'll be in this Wednesday's paper for next Tuesday.
So, what's the?
It, it, it's, I found the card. It is the Employee Recognition Dinner, uh, and it's sponsored by the Rotary Club. And then, the thing that you were referring to, Madam Chair, is you were referring to the RadPAC Summit, uh, that starts, I believe that starts at five, and that is an open house.
Okay, that's what I, I didn't know, there was another.
We didn't either.
We just got that.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that employee recognition, what it is, is that is for the, the employers throughout Tuila City mostly, but Tuila County, who help us with our eighteen to twenty-two year old program.
Oh, right.
It's to recognize them and be in good community partners.
We, we're not, if I'm not mistaken, you don't have to do the Tuila, the transcript, you could change it from there. Um, there, there's other means of notification to the public, right?
Okay.
And still be complaint to the law, so, I, I don't think we're beholden to, just because.
The transcript.
It got published on, you know.
Yes, yes, I, yes. Okay. Um, is this appropriate to pull out our calendars and decide now, or no? So, it's, if we're gonna need to change it? Um, I know initially, we were looking at the, any night, the week of the, so, we even mentioned Monday, the twenty-fourth, the day pri- prior.
I know Bob wants that night.
I'm actually, I was telling Camille, I am actually available any of those nights, as long as it's after dark, you know?
After dark, I remember, after dark. Is, uh, Monday night available? I'm good.
Alan, Monday the twenty-fourth, so we, I texted the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth's still good, we played Bed Moment up there on the twenty-fourth.
On Monday?
So, we scheduled game.
Oh, yeah, I know how those, ours minds playing right now.
Um.
I mean, don't, don't worry about that, though.
What if we just moved the Tuesday night to seven-thirty? Would everybody be okay with that? No?
That makes for a very long night, but.
There's kind of a lot to cover on this, actually. Um, okay. Alan?
Yeah.
Are you, are you the only one that couldn't make Monday? How do you, yeah, is everyone, I don't, I don't.
What about the other nights, the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh?
Twenty-sixth is a Wednesday.
Twenty-seventh I could probably do, twenty-sixth I couldn't do.
So, twenty-seventh is a Thursday.
I'm good.
Julia?
Yeah.
Valerie, Thursday? Bob, Thursday?
Thursday's mine with me.
Okay. Alan, Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make it work.
Make it work.
Well, if, if you have to choose, take her over me, so.
Take her over.
You don't have to choose, Alan, I'm gonna make it work.
He's, she's.
If you have to try too hard to make it work.
And what time of week?
Should we say se- is seven still okay for everyone? That lets everyone get home from work if you need to, and, seven worked? Okay. Change that to se- sorry, Jackie. Twenty-seventh at seven. Twenty-seventh at seven. And that's a work meeting.
And then, the only other thing I wanted to bring up for the roundtable is, uh, JLC starts this Friday. For those of you who don't know, the legislative session started today. So, JLC, which is the Joint Legislative Committee, it's School Board Members and Superintendent's Association, meet together and talk about legislative priorities and bills, so, um, I think so far, me and Dr. Ernst and Lark are going on Friday. I don't know if any other board members want to go, you're more than welcome. I, Lark, what, leave here ten-thirty, ten-fifteen Friday? Probably.
Yeah.
Or just text me if you wanna go.
And how long does that typically end up?
Hours, just kidding.
So, you're not like back before school gets out?
Uh, which school, secondary or elementary?
Secondary, e- either, both?
Elementary, for sure. I would say probably two or three hours, depending on how many bills they wanna discuss.
Maybe we could drive separately and make it back. Okay. If you want, let's talk about that, yeah.
Yeah, and we can talk about that after. Um, and then, my only other thing I wanna talk about was our conference, which was, of course, USBA Conference, and I had a great time. I think the thing I took away the most at that conference was learning about trust, and how important that is for any organization and team, so, just wanted to shout that out.
Scott, do you have anything? Brian, your mic's on, okay.
Oh, sorry.
All right. It, Bob?
Uh, I'd, I'd echo what Camille said about the, the conference, and especially the session on, that we attended on trust. I think everybody went to both sessions of that. Uh, also, uh, we had an excellent visit at Settle, at Settlement Canyon this past week. Uh, it was a great visit, uh, I think, you know, in speaking about trust, uh, they had a great exa- they had some great examples of how students were trust, were starting to trust the faculty and things. And then also, I, I appreciate Mike Garcia and Ian, and I got a, uh, update on the welding area at Stansbury High School, and it's moving right along, and sounds good, and it sounds like it's gonna be a big help, so I do appreciate that, Mike. If you'll pass that on, I don't see Ian, but if you'll pass that on to Ian, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Also, at the Settlement Canyon, they made us a, a little card.
Oh, thank you.
They really, they really had a really great, um.
Tuck in your mic.
They, they had really implemented trust really well, in terms of, and kindness, in their, uh, curriculum and in their culture, and it was really good to see.
Okay. Um, let's move on to our action items. Oh, that's cute. They signed it all, just let everyone, it's really.
They had also, in the third grade hall, the teachers had the kids, um, write little notes to the board members, like, how much they appreciate us, and then they put it on the outside of their doors, so as we walked past, we could read the little notes. It was really cute.
Okay, um, next one, new policy. This is a model policy, I think, USBA model policy. Uh, Terry Christensen, Board President duties. When I was reading it, it's more than just Board President duties, right? It looked like kind of the whole board, right? Or did I?
Uh, yes. Yes, it is. Uh, this is, as you've mentioned, one of the model policies, uh, USBA Council, Patrick Tanner, uh, mentioned, or brought to us. So, um, if there's any changes, it, basically, that's copy and paste from his model policy, so.
Okay.
Um, on, under D duties regarding staff, is number six, is that correct? Um, so it's M A S, Mass, the Board President? The full board. So, it's.
That's a typo.
Yeah, so it's under D, number six.
Uh, yeah, uh, looks like a little typo right there.
Any other questions, comments? I'm looking for a.
Madam Chair, I move that we move this on to the second reading.
Okay. I need a second.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Bob, seconded by Julie, to move new po- uh, Board President duties onto a second reading. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, on to revised policy five-zero-one-seven. Terry, is this a model policy as well?
Um, it, it, there have been changes to this based on mo- model policy, so, uh, a lot of the changes are more in regard to reflecting current practice. Uh, that's what you'll see in the appeals process, uh, the application process. Um, so, um, there, there are a couple of code references that we need to make some verification thereof, so, obviously, for second or third reading. Um, and then, uh, with this policy, once it's adopted, then we're considering rolling in five-zero-one-three to the end of this, uh, section of policy, because they're so close, uh, in topic. So, at some point in time, future day, uh, uh, second, third reading, once this gets approved, uh, then we'll roll five-zero-one-three into that at the end of it, and then retire five-zero-one-three, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Could I, could I ask you?
Sure.
On six-point-five, it talks about revised policy, uh. Five, five-zero-three, now, is that the one you're talking about that would be rolled into this?
Yeah, the one that's all red line.
Yeah, so, but we don't wanna adopt any of that tonight, correct?
No, no, because basically, that would be copy and pasting into the end of five-zero-one-seven. So, no action on this, on that one specifically.
Okay, so we're moving five-point, uh.
So, why don't we agree a motion, we can, right?
Yeah.
Why don't we, I motion that we move, uh, revised policy five-zero-one-seven forward for a second reading, as well as five-zero-one-three forward to a second reading.
I'll second.
Moved by Scott, seconded by Camille, to move five-zero-one-seven and five-zero-one-three to a second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Sure.
Um, revised policy six-zero-two-zero, notification received from Juvenile Courts, Jeff Wyatt.
So, all I did was update the state language, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Any questions?
Are you looking for a second read, or for, um?
I think we're going to a second read.
Oh, right there, sorry.
No, you're good.
Okay, I motion that we, um, move policy six-zero-two-zero for a second read.
I'll second.
Been moved by Camille, seconded by, who's seconded down there? Sorry, Valerie. Um, seconded by Valerie, um, to move to a second read, six-zero-two-zero. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Six-point-four, sex education materials, Chantel Cowan.
Excited to be here again, and not at the end of the agenda.
Has it really been two years?
It has been a long time.
Wow.
Um, we just would like to get our seventh grade science textbook on our list of approved materials, so that's what we're looking for.
Um, I just have a quick question. The name I submitted to you a while ago, is she on helping you with the curriculum committee, or were you not able to?
Reached out, but have not connected yet.
Okay, I was just curious, so thank you. Um, and you just need a motion to adopt it? To approve?
To approve it, to, to be used in the classroom.
Okay.
Do we have to do it for a second? We have to put it out for a second reading in case there are any science te- or, or, are the science teachers included on this, or not?
Um, no, but they're aware of the material.
Okay.
You can put it out for a second read if you'd like, but, uh, they're very familiar with the material, we'd like to get it on the list, so, we're hoping for approval.
Okay.
If you're looking, yeah.
I'll make a motion, um, to go ahead and approve structure and function of life, and reproduction and inheritance.
Second.
It's been moved by Camille, seconded by Bob, to approve structure and function of life, and reproduction and inheritance, as an approved curriculum. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, we've done six-point-five, six-point-six. Policy six-zero-two-nine, case management team, Jeff Wyatt.
So, what we did with this was, there was actually two policies that existed, but they're redundant, so we combined them into one policy and updated the, the wording and the team.
What is the other one?
The other one, uh, you know what, I didn't write it down.
Is it six-zero-one-four, the retirement policy?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just so we can do them at the same.
No, you're good.
Oh, yeah.
It shortens the policy manual just a hair.
So, I, I'll motion that we, uh, move pulse, revised policy six-zero-two-nine forward to a second read, as well as policy six-zero-one-four for a second read.
I'll second.
Moved by Scott, seconded by Valerie, um, to move six-zero-two-nine to a second read, and six-zero-one-four to a second read. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, uh, any opposed? Motion passes. Six-point-eight, new policy, procurement, appeals, and oversight. Okay, so this is a second read, so.
Correct, the next four.
Oh, the next four, those are those, yeah, financial ones, yes. Okay, Lark?
No, I was just gonna point out that they're fore-related, uh, there are no changes since the first one, and I've, haven't seen any comments coming through on them.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll motion that we approve policy, the new policy, procurement, appeals, and oversight, as well as procurement protests and department, as well as procurement protests and department, and procurement violations and offenses.
I'll second.
Moved by Scott, seconded by Camille, to approve policy, procurement, appeals, and oversight, po- new policy procurement, protests, and department proceedings, and new policy procurement, protests, and department appeals, and new policy procurement violations and offenses. Any discussion of that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, six-point-one-two, revised policy five-zero-zero-four, the dress code. Angie, did we have any other comments on, on that? We moved it to a second read last time. read last time? Okay. I'm looking for, unless, unless there's discussion. Okay.
I move that we adopt, uh, revised policy 5004 Student Dress Code.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Bob, seconded by Julia to, um, adopt revised policy 5004 Student Dress Code. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Revised Policy 4032, this is also a second read. Um, Mr. Porter, do we have, is there any questions or discussions? Was there anything needed to update?
We just had one change between the first read and the second read. And that's halfway down on the, on the second page highlighted in yellow. That's on page three of five. Enrollment in a university-based program, the approved educator preparation program for programs that require student teaching to a kind of school, which will follow guidelines of the institution regarding student teaching placement and other requirements. We just needed to add that clarification in there for our student teachers. Everything else stayed the same.
Okay. I move that we implement 6.1 through, oh, just kidding. Policy 4032 Educator Licensing, um, yes, implementation, right?
Yes.
I said all that. Sorry.
You're good.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Valerie, seconded by Camille to implement policy 4032 Educator Licensing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. I'm looking for a, another.
I'll motion that we adjourn to executive session to discuss. Is it different than what's here?
Oh, probably not.
Okay. Either way, I'll do this one. Uh, to be held in the executive conference room of the district office to discuss character, professional competency, or physical, mental health of an individual pending, or reasonable human litigation, purpose, exchange, purchase, purchase, exchange, or lease of real property at 7:15.
Do I have a second? Or no, I just roll call? Okay. Bob?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Alan?
Aye.
Julia?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I say aye. Meetings adjourned.
Right? The meeting's adjourned, right?
Oh, reconvene.